There's a lot going on.
Good morning. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for prayer. Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 6th meeting and the May 6th special meeting and the May 8th public hearing.
Second motion.
Motion, second. Any additional discussion? I think for the May 8th evening meeting, there was also a court reporter here. So I thought the approach of just kind of having bullet points for that made a lot of sense for those minutes. There was a lot of discussion there.
I agree.
But also knowing there's a transcript, I think is appropriate.
But it gave the main points of everybody that presented.
Right, for sure. Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Moving on, is there any public comment regarding any of our pending resolutions today? Seeing none, we'll move on to the resolutions today from the county engineer's office. We have Dan Becker.
Morning.
Morning, Dan.
We've got four resolutions for your consideration today. The first is authorizing the county engineer to advertise her bids for CH-19 Lake Road realignment project. The second is determining that equipment that we use is in excess and can be disposed of properly. The third is determining necessity to close Lake Road for some culvert replacements. And the last is necessity to close various county roads for bridge deck ceiling projects.
I will make a motion to approve the four resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Yes, the permit list is getting longer and longer as we get into summer.
That's a good thing.
It is. Good thing.
Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Next up, Jeremy Cinco, sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Only one resolution for consideration today, and that's authorizing a cooperative agreement between Medina County and the Ohio Water Development Authority for the Liverpool wastewater treatment plant can be building enclosure project.
I will make a motion to approve.
I will second the motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you. Holly, HR.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personnel changes resolution today, we have two new hires, one in maintenance and one at senior and adult services, six rate increases, five at sanitary and one at county home, one promotion in sanitary, one date correction in job and family services, one leave of absence in sanitary, one resignation in sanitary, and one probationary removal at county home.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Holly. Next up, Brett Thomas from finance.
Hi, Brett.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have five resolutions for you, short and sweet this week. Our first one is cash transfers for various funds. This is movement for the ditch fund to pay for the engineering work that is done throughout the year. Our second resolution is the transfer of funds for print shop revenue. That is in the amount of $1,879.75. Our third resolution is the, an amendment to the adult probation, drug, and mental health court specialized docket grant in an amount that was approved through for the mental health and recovery board, increase in $6,119. Our fourth resolution is expenses for county officials. We have none out of state this week. And our fifth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $2,405,529.37.
I will make a motion to approve the five resolutions.
Second the motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks, Brett. Next up, Matt Spreer, county administrator.
Good morning. I have two resolutions. The first one is approving change order number two for the county home foundation repair project. The cost to complete this work would be $480,135. Obviously, this is the bulk of the repair of the project. As you know, we placed 100, or I'm sorry, 1 million in our contingencies. There still would be some interior repair work needed at a later time for the cafeteria area. So Greg has moved all the meals up to the community rooms, so we would still have additional costs, but this would be the vast majority of the repair needed to put that building back into operation.
Good.
The second resolution is approving a service contract. This would be with the MCSS and the Ohio Guidestone for mental health and counseling sessions at a cost of $630 per session, and it would not exceed $10,000 through the duration of the contract period.
I will make a motion to approve the two resolutions.
I will second the motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion? The, maybe it's going to come up in the report, but we've got some, the bracing costs have been incurred already.
That's correct.
And what's the, another approximate amount of where we are on those?
We are, even with this expense here being approved, we are at about $600,000 total in expenses. That includes all the design fees that we've incurred to date. Again, some of the interior repair work is estimated to be roughly $150,000. So with that 1 million that we placed in contingencies, based upon these numbers here, we would still be under that projected worst-case scenario budget.
Good. Okay. Additional discussion? Roll call.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next up, we have department updates. Speaking of the county home, well timed appearance by Mr. Greg Brett.
I always like when people talk about the county home. So, good morning. Census for today, 43 residents to adult daycare. Last week, increased my census in residents and adult daycare 1 in 1. Staffing, only one full-time position is open, one second shift at this point, and that we have an applicant for. We're just waiting on the BCI. So we are, that staffing is great. The only place where I do have openings is intermittent LPNs and aides, but the ones that I have in there currently, though, are taking care of any vacations and short-term. So excellent on our staffing right now. Maintenance, they've stayed on top of all the minor emergencies, clogged drains, leaky valves. We had a pipe that was leaking, some light fixtures, and anytime we repair them, we upgrade them, upgrade them to LED. Events that have happened, starting in March from the last time I was here, the Chipmunks came in to the home and hosted a bingo for the residents. Access the Arts, can't say enough about them. Usually, they come twice a month, always with a craft and a snack. And Janet George has the residents spoiled. She gives them their requests of what they want. This next one is the strawberry and pretzel dessert, and I always have to make an appearance if it's going to be something like that, just to make sure that craft is going.
Sure, quality control.
That's right. The Friends of Medina County Home have been, since March, have been doing a pizza and birthday cake. They were already buying the birthday cake, and now they provide pizza as well. They come in, they serve. And then the birthday cake has the residents for that month on there. And that's something that the residents, in fact, it's this Saturday, and they've been saying it all week about the pizza party. So for April, I had the Christian Apostolic Church come. They did singing and sherbet, and that was excellent. The Board of Elections came twice to help us with early voting because two residents weren't there at the time, so they came twice for that. That was great. Access the Arts, two times. The residents had an Easter egg hunt. The Friends did their birthday party. April's our biggest month, eight residents and the house cat. She was, she came in April of 2021. And then Kiwanis, they did their ham raffle. Three people donated their hams to the home, and that's, that was what was served for the Easter meal. Airmark did a great job of the meal. In May, pizza party, the residents are starting to go to the parks now. It's fine, nice enough out if it's not raining. But Buckeye Woods, Boenslager, and River Sticks are on for this month. Nature Pam is coming. It's already Senior Day at the Fairgrounds coming up. We had the Health Department come and present to the residents hand washing and reasons why you should. And then the Clutters did their Down on the Farm at their place. This was the second year instead of the Fairgrounds and the whole horse show. It's at their house now, and the residents really enjoy that. Some of the donations that we received this month, the Medina Presbyterian Church, they used to do a cornucopia, and so they collect fresh fruits and vegetables. They call and ask what we're really looking, you know, what our preferences are. They're being delivered. Also Crop King, just this week, they've incorporated, so we always have the lettuce as long as it's, it's in season for them, but the tomatoes, I'm getting cherries, I'm getting beef steaks already. Yeah, they're amazing. And then also cucumbers. And then Holy Martyrs Church, every Friday without fail, there's Panera that arrives at the back double doors. So, and then always Medina County residents, always so gracious in donating specific clothing items, hygiene products, flowers, food items. I had a lady yesterday who wanted to volunteer a peacock that she found in her backyard that if I could just go get it, I could have it. Unfortunately, it was a peacock, the male, and I already have a male, and two males and a female can't be together in the same cage. So, and then the resolution that was just passed always makes me happy because I know now that not only are we braced, but now that they truly can begin the repairs for the North Wing.
And your census numbers reflect, I think you're at capacity based on the modified space.
I had a room available.
Yeah.
And I just filled that room. So yes, I am at capacity.
Good. Well, appreciate your continued resilience with that situation, and hopefully we'll get it squared away here sooner rather than later.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Greg.
Next up, we have a commissioner's resolution. So this is a resolution coming out of our hearing from last Tuesday's special meeting. This is a resolution objecting to the exemption for the number of years in excess of 10 and the exemption for a percentage of improvement exempted in excess of 75 relating to the proposed TIF ordinance for the city of Wadsworth in accordance with Ohio revised code 5709.40E1. So this is the, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second the motion.
So this is the resolution that kind of the upshot from last week's discussion was we weren't certain if we needed to take this step or not because the city of Wadsworth hadn't yet taken any steps to approve it and subsequently took steps not to approve it or to disapprove it, I guess. But in any event, I think just as a matter of precaution, because the clock started running when we received notice, according to the revised code, whether that notice was valid or not, we thought it made sense to take, take a step to object. So this is that resolution.
And I think the meeting really had a lot of good information, and you ran it well, and I think a lot of people got to, you know, put their thoughts and information on the record. It was, I thought it was a wonderful idea that we had it as a separate meeting.
Yeah, I think so, too. I agree that, well, number one, the, out of abundance of caution, we're formally objecting to it. I still have issues with the developer being able to go ahead and start the clock rather than the legislative authority like the statute says. But I understand and agree that we ought to be taking the motion, and if I, I guess to evaluate what was proposed and the numbers, they still don't make sense. The bond issuance doesn't make sense. The payback doesn't make sense. And even their calculations seem to be more off of an envelope than they are actually the tax records. Those were CAUV values at the start and towards the end adding the other. It just literally was a bad deal. And I know their contention, their testimony to us, and the record shows, that they needed to go rather than the 10-year because they had to go 30-year because they were doing a payment in lieu of taxes to the schools as the premise of it. They could have gone 11 or 12 years and still be able to do a pilot to the schools. And it's, you just don't have to go from 10 to 30 the way the law is written. So indeed, it's all about the numbers and the math. The math didn't add up, and of course, this is, this is not only would have been a bad deal for the county, but a bad deal for the city of Wadsworth.
And I'd like to add, you know, our departments, like the county home and our departments associated with the Health and Human Services levy, they understand that 10 to 30 jump, they would have a lot more people to serve and no additional funds. That's significant.
Oh, yeah. And I, yeah, I just, like I said, it was a bad deal for the county. It's, and I think you, as you pointed out, as Commissioner Swedick pointed out more than once, and I think confirmed, this was set a precedent. Every, and we know that it's typically done in some areas of the state where they have 30-year and they do TIFs on purely residential. Every residential development coming in that needed a public improvement in public road would start asking for a 30-year TIF. And that just, like I said, this is just unprecedented. The city of Wadsworth has done TIFs. I encourage them. I think I agree. They need that, they need the roadway through, even the township agree. They need the roadway through. They would like to see some residential, not as, as obviously as dense as, as that they're proposing. And of course, there's the benefit to the city with their water loop and a pump station. I, those are all valid public infrastructure needs, but this was not the way to do that. And I think the city needs to, and I'm glad the council is jumping in and asserting themselves in appropriately in their legislative authority in evaluating this project and not moving forward.
Right. And I think from our perspective, I think it's our job to look at those, always look at these projects from the cost-benefit analysis because we're certainly not, not against development. We are growing county. We've got to keep that in mind. But the cost in this case, as you pointed out, is immense, so therefore I'd need to see a corresponding benefit that resembles that. And I think the biggest kind of sale point that the developer was pointing to was paving the way for future growth. Growth for the sake of growth is, you know, concerning, especially when we're talking about a quadrant of the city that's already expanding into the township area. So I think the township's interests in that need to be at least considered before those decisions are made. And, you know, I think we want to be thoughtful about the bigger picture because we are going to see, you know, as we're, as our city limits start to get stretched a little bit in the, in the coming years, we're probably going to see more proposals like this. And, and for me, one of the critical aspects is going to be the alignment between the township interests and the, and the city interests in pursuing that. So it didn't, it didn't appear to me that much consideration had been given about how that further, that additional growth in the future was going to impact the township, and so it's hard to get on board on the basis of, you know, it would be a lot easier to get on board, I should say, if there was some roadmap of what that's going to look like 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, in the context of this, of this plan. So to me, the cost-benefit, it just, it pretty clearly failed that from the county's perspective and some of the other dynamics that we need to look at. So with that, if there's no other discussion, we'll call a roll.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Okay, we have a second commissioner's resolution. This is appointing Patricia K. Martin to the Medina County Advisory Council on Aging and Disability. She would be appointed as at-large member number five.
I will make a motion to approve.
Second the motion.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Appreciate her willingness to serve. Roll call, please.
Swedick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes. Next up is public comment. Is there any other public comment this week? No. Seeing none, we'll move on to the discussion session.
Yes, Ed Zachary sent us a notice of Medina County Parks and the Merchandise Plaque Dedication Ceremony. It'll be Friday at 10:00 AM, and I believe you're going to be able to attend, Steve?
I'm going to try, I've got a 9 o'clock Natural Resources Assistant Counsel here at 9:00, and I'm hopeful that it, I'll be able to make it over by 10:00.
And I'm going to be there.
Crossfingers.
Oh.
Yep.
I thought it was you.
It was you.
Yep.
I misread the email.
Yeah.
We're both going to try to make it.
Yeah.
But no, I should, I will be there for sure. So anything else on that?
No, I do not.
Matt, do you have anything this week?
I, I do. Yeah, actually, I'm going to request that we consider canceling or at the most, we'll just say postponing the two public meetings that are scheduled regarding the developer agreement. Matt and I met with Jeremy Cinco last week to start the discussion. I've talked to Andy as well as Denise. We'd like to hold off moving forward with that discussion of the same document and, and an alternative of hiring a consultant to come in and assist the county, assist the Planning Department as well as the Planning Commission in creating a document, not only developer agreement, but also the subdivision regulations for future, for public consideration. We'll have to go through public hearings and all that, but in other words, to refine the document. We've taken, I think we've taken earnest, people have made earnest statements, good statements, ones that we ought to be considering and utilizing to evaluate this developer, developer agreement. I think that there is some disagreements between the sanitary and the highway engineer and some of these provisions, but it became apparent that nobody on our side of the table has any experience with the developers' agreement working with the subdivision regulations. So the idea is to find, and I think Matt has some ideas, we might be able, as well as Denise, to bring in and have a consultant that has a familiarity and expertise, not only in developer agreements but subdivision regulations and making sure that they work and, and as they are utilized in many, many other communities. So with your permission, I'd like to, we can cancel that or at least postpone it until we have the opportunity to bring in a consultant and, and assist the, well, the Planning Commission as well as our departments in putting together documents that we can then have for future public hearings.
Yeah, two things. I'd like to make sure that Allison Hall is notified that we're postponing because she was the one who informed all of the builders and contractors. And then also a thank you to Jeremy Cray from Polte for organizing May 28th at his facility and informing both of them that we're canceling.
My, my only thought, I like the idea of moving forward with, with a third party. I think for the reasons you mentioned, I think my sense in both of the preliminary discussions that we've had on this is there's a perception, and I do think it's a perception, but, you know, that, that there's some resistance or reluctance to development on the part of the county, and I think that's incorrect. I think it'll prove to be incorrect through this process, but having a third-party voice, I think, cuts through some of that. So I think that's a great idea. I am a little bit reserved about the possibility of canceling those hearings just because they've been noticed already. And because there have been arrangements, I worry that-
What are we going to review?
Well, I, we're going to have-
The same document?
We're going to have a very similar conversation to what we just had. I don't disagree with that. And, but I also think because we've, we've provided that notice, that it's an opportunity to, to provide feedback on the current version of the document, there may be folks who didn't show up last week who have something, some other perspective to bring. And I just, I worry about the, again, the perception of cutting off that opportunity for comment.
We could still, in the meantime, entertain public comment in writing and so forth without having a public hearing or a public flogging, if you will, of a document that's been flogged plenty.
Right. And I, and I think that's right. I mean, I think, I think the direction we're heading, the direction I was heading coming out of that hearing, it sounds like it's consistent with everybody else's perception up here, was the document needs an overhaul before it can become viable.
Should we do a compromise and maybe do the daytime one and not the nighttime one? I don't know.
I'd be open to that. I, I just, I just worry about the, the perception that we're kind of moving the goalposts.
Well, we're not moving forward with the document. We're pausing.
Right.
Inasmuch as we're trying to bring some level of expertise, experience, independence, if you will,
Right.
from the county interests, if you will, that have experienced professional expertise in that area as it has been applied in Wayne County, in Lorain County, and some county as well as over, I mean, just start going down the list of all the communities that have had this in place for a number of years. It just makes some sense. It takes it off of, if you will, off our plate in some ways of trying to come up with a document by the 28th.
Yep. The other thought, though, that I, that could be somewhat beneficial is if we had that, if we kept even just the daytime hearing, which I do think was going to be the better attended of the two because they've had-
Yes, according to the developers, yes.
They're planning on having a lot of people there. Perhaps, would it be feasible to have somebody lined up in this third-party capacity by then? Maybe they can sit in on that hearing or?
I'm not sure. Well, at this point, I would propose that we'll have to go through a screening process, evaluate the individuals.
So we probably wouldn't have that.
And so probably not. And that would make little sense to at least have the opportunity for them to delve into it. And they certainly can, will look at all the written testimony, everything that's come forward, but also be able to provide at least an indication of what they think in terms of scope of services as well as timeframe. If we are talking about somebody that has an academic background, they have to complete what their requirements are as a consultant. So I think it, it would be overly optimistic to think that could be, they would have a product
Yeah.
that they could provide on the 28th for public comment.
No, they certainly wouldn't have a product.
Or even to, whether they would want to add that.
Even be sitting in, though, to hear the, hear what the, kind of the tenor of the room is.
Sure.
Would it be feasible, we do have a little bit of time, would it be feasible to maybe reach out to the Home Builders Association and kind of take their temperature on it and see, I mean, if they, if they don't have any objections to us postponing, I'd be inclined to postpone, but they have objections.
We've got a number of, we've got a number of public meetings. Every Tuesday, we meet, we allow public comment. If anyone wants to show up, the commissioners' meeting, that is a subject they can bring in, they can, they can, here's the document we have.
How about I contact Jeremy from Polte and Allison Hall from the developers' association, homeowners, home builders' association, and, and get their feedback and, and report back next Tuesday on a final decision?
I hate to see another court reporter being paid to sit here and document the flogging of a document that we've already done multiple times.
But the Polte one was going to be, was targeted for the Home Builders Association.
I agree. I understand. That's exactly my concern is, were there people who didn't appear last week because they were planning on that one? And that is, because it's not on a regular Tuesday meeting day. And, and the court reporter, if, if somebody chooses to do that, they can do that for any public meeting. I, I think, whether, whether I think that's necessary or not, it's a different story.
Do you want to, do you want to just do the compromise? Does it cancel the nighttime and just do the daytime one?
I'd be inclined to do that. I mean, if we don't, if you don't, that way we know we're preserving the meeting that's scheduled at the Home Builders Association. I'd be inclined to do that if we want to do that, or do we want to, we want to get their, take their temperature on it first.
I'll go to any meeting you guys want to have.
Okay. Then maybe let's just, can we just do that, Rhonda?
Yes, you want to keep the daytime and then cancel the evening?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. But we can, Denise and Jeremy and Andy and Matt, we can go ahead and start proceeding.
Yeah, definitely.
Finding some, bringing in, making sure, well, obviously we'll share the scope of services, the credentials and so forth.
And Steve, I think that will be an accident thing for you to report at that meeting that you're, that-
We'll hopefully have someone identified already and under contract that would have to come here to do so.
And that solves what I had, what I left that meeting with, with the biggest challenge I thought we were facing was bridging that gulf between what I, what I want to avoid here. I want this to be collaborative. I don't want it to be the county is on one side pushing for this and the developers on this side pushing for this. So I think a voice in the middle is going to, is going to bridge some of that.
I mean, we had more than one comment that, it has to be synchronous with the subdivision regulations. And that we, that isn't, and so we need to make sure we have that in place before we end up having them-
Absolutely.
Confuse the two.
I will request that Allison sends out an email to her constituents that the nighttime is canceled and we're just going to focus on the daytime one on that date.
Denise Gibson, the dead.
Sure. So do you mind if I, so I sent out the hundreds of emails that I have been sending out regarding this, announcing the three public hearings. Is it okay if I also send out a follow-up indicating the evening?
Evening one.
And then you'll also kind of work your network as well, contact Allison.
Jeremy and Allison, and then, but your email is vital for how-
You're okay with that? Because I can just copy and paste.
100%.
Okay.
Thank you. Because that's, that is the other concern with canceling is if somebody had it on their calendar, they're coming to that evening one, and then they don't get notice of that. So we do want to take steps to make sure.
Invite them to come to a commissioner meeting any Tuesday at 9:00.
Is there anything that should be published in the paper because of a, so I don't know.
No, we can. Our newsletter's coming out Friday, right?
Well.
In the newspaper?
Yeah.
When we, when we cancel, do we typically make a published notice that we're canceling?
We can, we can do that. We can keep it on there and just put in capital letters, "canceled." And it'll go in the Gazette?
Yep. I think that's helpful, too.
I think your email is really important.
More precisely, probably say to be, to be rescheduled at another time and date.
Yeah.
Our intention is to have additional public hearings.
And, and that's the other, that's the other thing that I completely agree with is we're going to have more. What I, what, and I share your objective of having a fruitful discussion over a document that's got a viable path forward, and we're not there yet. And so that, that completely, I agree with. I just don't, with the way that some of these things have been pursued thus far, I don't want it to seem like we're pulling the rug out from under an opportunity, public flogging, though it may be. Use your terminology. Okay. Anything else?
I just want to thank the voters for issue two.
Yes.
On the ballot, overwhelming support and just, I'm just glad because we met Friday and our integrating committee and are already starting, setting up the methodology and the timeframe for all the road projects with this level of funding. timeframe for all the road projects with this level of funding that's promised, that it'll be an increased level. Not sure if they've come out and decided out how much each region gets. That's not been communicated yet because that is yet to be decided by the higher-ups. But it is one where we've got a number of projects that'll be coming forward. And the last I'll just mention is that the Natural Assistance Research, Resources Assistance Council, our District Nine, we're going to be having a meeting here Friday at 9:00 a.m. It is a public meeting. It also will be Zoom if anybody, or remote, that's our first remote under state law, they allow us now to have those. This is our first one, we've already passed the policy. OPWC approved it, but it, but it also requires that the chairperson have it in a public building, what is publicly accessible at the time we have the meeting. So the rest, everybody will be virtual, but the reason I'm bringing this up because we will be confirming our methodology of scoring projects. And the biggest area of contention, as you know, we've had in the prior ones, where we've had property that has been zone manufacturing or industrial and the entity wants to put a permanent conservation easement on property that is under a CRA or has industrial or zoning and using the grant to do so. How we're going to score those projects as they come forward and what level of support the local community has to have in order to it not be negatively scored. So Beth Dettler came to the last Enrec meeting, provided some insight on that, and so the council will be determining the methodology and how that's done, which I think has some important implications for not only our county but others, as we've got these projects that we know are coming forward. And you're literally talking about hundreds of acres in industrial parks that would be taken out of the tax base permanently for the purposes of parks. So I love parks, I love public parks, and I love industrial parks. Industrial parks, one pays for the other.
Yeah.
I'm just saying. So at this point, I think we, our methodology, we invite anybody that wants to attend, but this will be our first one that's, and we have also the Zoom link on our notice as well.
Great. Thank you for that update. Next Tuesday, I will be in Washington, actually, for a, it's an Ohio Leadership Conference.
Yes, very exciting.
So there's a survey that I need to fill out about the topics that are of interest to us, and I just wanted to pick your brains a little bit. I'm obviously going to cover the well-tread area of our NOAC and MPO involvement. I was curious about any other, because as you think about kind of the federal landscape is distinguished from our communication with our leaders in Columbus, other priorities, you know, one that came to mind was rural broadband or coordination with public utilities, but I think we've gotten some of that resolved. Are there anything like that that I should be bringing to the fore as we have these discussions?
Dangerous territory.
Yeah, right. Well, you don't-
It's rural broadband. I'll just make a comment, I've not done this very often, very publicly, is the, I'll just say hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent on public, on broadband expansion, largely without requirements for service or cost or enter future use. It's basically just been millions of dollars for corporate interests that have benefited customers and expanding them without any other requirements to meet any kind of public benefit. And unfortunately, I think that that's, I'm not sure it's an oversight, but it's, the danger of it, they should have put, I think, much more requirements. Some reliance that this has a public benefit, and there are some safeguards in terms of future costs on the consumer and those kind of kinds, as well as you have these, you have a lot of mileage, I'll just say, in terms of fiber where nobody can get access to them and where, because they don't develop a fiber hood, if you will, if they don't develop off that main line, you've got people with high-speed internet going right by their homes that'll never have access because the return on investment isn't there for them to develop a community.
Right.
And without those kind of requirements, without those kind of requirements, you've basically spent a lot of money for the private sector to make a lot of money.
And the other, the other side of that coin is what's happening in my neighborhood in Mountville Township where I think we're, we must qualify for some of those dollars. We currently, we just recently had the third different fiber provider come through our neighborhood. Well, they're still going through our neighborhood apparently because there's holes everywhere.
Yeah.
And they've, and they've stopped their, their production for one reason or another. And you think, I don't know that anybody's going to sign up with that customer because Lit Fiber was there and Armstrong came about the same time that Lit Fiber was there because they knew they were having competition, and now we've got a third provider. And it doesn't, we, there are places that don't have it, but I'm sure they're collecting on those promises of-
If you look, it's running through a rural neighborhood that actually nobody can access.
Right, right.
How, and it doesn't make any sense in terms of distribution.
And I think those are, those are both consequences of-
There's the distribution issue and that the public dollars have been spent without those requirements.
Yeah, those are both a product of bad policy. So I was, I was actually thinking about raising some of those issues. And the only other one that has been on my mind is the CHIPS Act because the, kind of the original promises of intel and the ancillary benefits for a community like ours haven't really been realized. And so I don't know if that's going to come up in any context, but I think it probably matters more if I were in central Ohio and my area is being developed directly. But I didn't know if either of you guys had anything else that should be on that list.
I think the MPO, the NOAC has probably got our top one.
I completely agree, right.
In terms of requirements of participation and the differences from MPO, the MPO.
Yeah, because the huge, that's always been my contention, the requirement of participation and a huge check that our taxpayers give every year for us to get not equal attention.
And when we look by the urbanized area, most of our county is not in the urbanized area. We've, I mean, we were removed from an urbanized definition for our transit and has had some significant consequences. So when you look at the population, it's not in the urbanized area, yet it's subject to the MPO.
Yeah, and I'll be beating that drum. The concern that I have because it's a statewide group, from my conversations I've had at CCAO Conference and with other, other parts of the state, and I know you're well aware of this, we're both well, all three of us are well aware of it, other parts of the states have MPOs that function differently and more, and superior.
Our state does, yeah.
Within Ohio. So it, I don't, it is not a universal issue even in all the counties of Ohio, even the ones that are affiliated with MPOs. And so it, I hope it doesn't get, become a backburner issue because I do think it's a, it's a top priority of mine at least, so.
I attended the regional legislative meeting with, CCAO does the regional one, we were down in Mansfield yesterday afternoon, and they were talking about, they went to a similar one. And I'll, to give them credit, and it was just, was just a couple of weeks ago, they were saying that the administration was very receptive, and they took names, they took information, and actually have already heard back on some of the initiatives. So I think it's, frankly, I think it's very worthwhile for you to be there. Hopefully, you'll get, get their ear, and it sounds like, at least most recently, they've had a lot of good feedback in terms of, for the administration actually looking into the local issues that have been brought up and concerns.
Yeah.
So I'm very hopeful that your, your mission will be successful.
Well, I'm happy, I'm happy to go, go try either way. So it seemed like a worthwhile endeavor, so I won't, I won't be here next week. That's where I'll be. Hopefully, that's an excuse to absence. Rhonda, is that excused?
Yes, it is.
Perfect, great, good. The other thing that I wanted to raise, we have a couple executive session items, but since our attorneys are in the room, lease discussions aren't part of executive session, right? Just purchase. So, so, and this is just a conceptual thing I wanted to run by both of you, as we've got the draft of the, of the property, the, for the, for the JVS, the old University of Akron property. So there was a helpful map that we put together that shows the whole property layout, the whole parcel. And essentially, what's being leased by the Career Center is going to be the improved area of it, the paved area, the buildings, all that sort of thing. But in looking through that, I thought, well, there could be, and I know we've had some discussions about this, too, there could be future development on that site. Hopefully, everything works great with the Career Center and they're building buildings and fully utilizing that site, or maybe there's other opportunities. So I just thought it might make sense that we have, that we define the, kind of the paved areas as common areas, meaning areas that they have access to, but also we would have access to. And then the areas kind of outside of what's already been improved as-
But when you, you said, hey, you don't include the parking lot.
Well, I think, I think it would include the parking lot, but they'd, but they'd be the, they'd be the exclusive users of it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they're the exclusive.
I think it would be described-
But the driveway would be mutual.
Right.
The driveway, yes.
It'd be described as common area, I think, just-
That also includes the utility corridor? That's that one in the front.
Yeah, so that's still in there.
We do have access to the utilities.
Yes, yeah. But, but the, the building itself would be the, the exclusive use area. The other paved areas would be common areas, but they would have the, the use of that exclusively because nothing else is there. But if there was a future add-on to that parking lot or something like that, it would almost certainly utilize the existing pavement that's there. That's why, what I'm thinking about. And then the, and then the area outside of that would basically just be property that they would have access to until there's anything else built there, you know? So it'd be, you know, the exclusive area, the common area, and then like non-exclusive area would be everything else.
And that, that doesn't eliminate the possibility that they come back to us and say, you know, in five years or something, hey, we're going to build an adjacent thing, we need a little bit more.
I would, I would love for that to happen.
Yeah.
And I just think we want to be thoughtful about the future possibilities on that site that involve them, that don't involve them or anything else that could happen there. So I think that gives us some flexibility.
I give them the exclusive use of the building, the footprint and all that, as well as that, certainly the parking lot makes sense.
Okay.
And I think we don't want to, having been around when we were doing this, divorce the idea that there are other partners that could utilize that site for education purposes.
Right.
It could be a community, who knows, in the next decade or two, could be a community college, it has some function, not just a county function, but an educational function.
Right.
They would actually be complementary to what the mission of the Career Center is.
And this goes back to, I think, some of their feedback was they wanted the ability to make it feel more campus-like.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think they can do that even with this clarification, and that would be the goal.